Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. We'll get started with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. J.L. Mitchell is the pastor at Tabitha Baptist Church. He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Griner if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance, but would everybody please stand?
Shall we bow? Gracious Life-Giver, King, our Father, our Maker, and our Ruler, we entreat you this morning as we come to pray for our officials who make decisions that impact the lives of people from all walks of life. We pray for the welfare of our communities, economic development continually. We pray for every neighborhood that is a part of our city. We pray, Father, for our educational system, the betterment of all of our children, that none would be left behind. We pray for the safety of our streets, the safety and protection of our law enforcement officers. We pray for even better race relations locally and nationally. We ask these things because we know that you are able to grant them. We're thankful, Father, and we ask your blessings over those who sit in the seats that make decisions that improve the lives of the citizenry of our city. And so, God, with your power and with your strength, we ask that you really empower them to continue to do what it is that you've called them to do, to continue to make inroads into the problems of life, but to also bring solutions. We pray for each one of them, brother, in your name. And by the strength that is within you, Lord, we grant it to be so today. We ask these things, these blessings, in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hope you'll pardon my tardiness this morning. I got to visiting with our Employees of the Year and simply lost track of the time. But the Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club each year helps us recognize not only Employees of the Month, which you might typically see here at City Council, but we select one employee as Employee of the Year. You can imagine when a city of over 4,000 employees to be selected as Employee of the Year is quite an honor. And we have a police officer, a firefighter, and then someone from our General Services Department that will be receiving the honors this morning. Let's start with Sergeant James Brown, who is our Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Police Officer of the Year. Sergeant Brown, if you'll come up and we have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled.
Whereas Sergeant James Brown has been a city employee for 12 years and is a field training officer in the Southwest Patrol Division Operations Bureau of the Police Department. Whereas Sergeant James Brown trains and mentors new officers, patrols city streets, assists citizens with taking reports, and preventing crime. Whereas on August 18th, 2014, Sergeant Brown responded to an active shooter call where he observed a female gunshot victim on the ground. With the shooter still firing from an signed apartment, Sergeant Brown crawled to the victim and finding her alive carried her out of harm's way to waiting IMSA and fire personnel. Whereas Sergeant James Brown helped medics while transporting the victim to the hospital. Even though she later succumbed to her wounds, Sergeant Brown's heroic efforts to save her while endangering his own life demonstrates his dedication to serve and protect the public. Whereas Sergeant Brown is a member of CHAPs, has several letters of commendation, including one for catching a police impersonator, and several letters of appreciation for volunteering for Special Olympics. Whereas this council desires to recognize Sergeant James Brown for his dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Sergeant James Brown, 2014 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Police Officer of the Year.
Let's show our appreciation for Sergeant Brown. As the clerk read in his report, Sergeant Brown went onto the porch of a live shooting situation and pulled a shooting victim off the porch in an attempt to try and save her life. And then has volunteered in the Special Olympics. And I think in many ways, he represents many of the 1,000 police officers that we have that protect us every day in Oklahoma City. I know he'll be the first to share his credit among the rest of the force, but please accept this honor as our Police Officer of the Year with all the respect that we can bestow and our appreciation from the council and myself at just how impressed we are by the willingness of you guys to go out and protect us on a daily basis. Thank you. And we do have to vote on this, so let me turn around. Okay, I'm guessing we're gonna have some green lights up here. Cast your votes. And you are now the Police Officer of the Year. Thank you very much, Sergeant. Thank you. Let's show our appreciation one more time. Thank you very much. And we also have a resolution of commendation for our Kiwanis Club Firefighter of the Year, and Corporal Keith McCabe is here. Corporal, you want to come up? Why don't you bring your wife with you, Terry? Why don't you come on up as well? We know that when you're married to a firefighter, that you're part of this effort as well. So we appreciate both of you and the commitment you're making to Oklahoma City. Let's have the resolution read by the clerk.
Whereas Corporal Keith McCabe has been a city employee for 25 years and is a firefighter EMT assigned to Fire Station 26 in the Fire Department. Whereas while off duty on September 23rd, 2014, Corporal McCabe came into contact with a citizen suffering a medical emergency. Knowing what to do from his training and experience, he began performing CPR with rescue breaths. When the first responders team arrived, Keith updated them on the patient's condition and they took over patient care. Whereas Corporal McCabe's selfless efforts in rendering aid helped to save this 46-year-old patient and provided a greater likelihood of not only survival, but a life with minimal to no long-term effects. Whereas Corporal McCabe, through off-duty, made split-second decisions to help another and save a life. His actions on that day exemplify the Fire Department's motto, "Meet the Need." Whereas this council desires to recognize Corporal Keith McCabe for his dedication to his profession and to the safety of the citizens of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Corporal Keith McCabe, 2014 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Firefighter of the Year.
Let's show our appreciation, Corporal McCabe. As the clerk said, Corporal McCabe, on his day off, was out running on a jogging course in South Oklahoma City when he witnessed one of our citizens fall over with a heart attack. He stopped, gave CPR, and then obviously called for fellow firefighters and first responders to come. But in the meantime, saved this man's life. And this man is alive today because of Corporal McCabe's superb and quick action. And once again, we'll have to have a vote on this. I've done my best to politic for you. I'm seeing if we can get some green lights for it. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. And you are now the Oklahoma City Firefighter of the Year for 2014. Thank you very much. And thank you both for your attendance. There you go. And we also have an employee coming to us from the General Services Department. Shawna, do you want to come up here? Where'd Mason go? Well, bring Mason on up here, too. Mason is Shawna's son. He's a fourth grader in the Bethany School System, and he's proud of his mom and came down here today. We have a resolution. I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled up here.
Whereas Shawna D. Street has been a city employee for two years and five months and is an Executive Assistant One in the Administration Division of the General Services Department. Whereas Shawna assists the Director and Administrative Manager with research, reports, scheduling, and correspondence. She also compiles department reports for two division heads and prepares PowerPoint presentations when needed. Whereas Shawna enjoys the challenge. When told it can't be done, she persevered through much trial and error to set up a program to generate certain reports from the City Works Work Order System, which ultimately saves the city money by more efficiently managing two extremely time-consuming tasks. Whereas Shawna designed databases for the department to alert supervisors when their employee's required license are about to expire and then tracks the testing required to renew the license. Whereas Shawna has a full work schedule every day, yet she is never too busy to answer questions or help other employees. When asked to do something she has not done before, she is quick to say, "I am not sure how to do that, but I will find out and take care of it." And she does exactly that. Whereas Shawna is patient, professional, and helpful when responding to citizens' calls for information. She keeps a copy of the guide to city government handy with pages marked for frequently asked questions. Whereas Shawna D. Street's diligence, dedication, determination to satisfactorily complete every assigned task, willingness to help others, desire to master new skills, and her consistently cheerful and confident attitude contributes to the morale of the entire department. Whereas this council desires to recognize Shawna D. Street for her dedication, professionalism, and commitment to the residents of Oklahoma City. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Oklahoma City that they do hereby thank and commend Shawna D. Street, 2014 South Oklahoma City Kiwanis Club Employee of the Year.
Let's show our appreciation to Shawna Street. Congratulations. Isn't this really cool? Yeah, I think so, too. Let's see if we can get some votes for your mom. How about a motion and a second? Cast your votes. And you are now the Employee of the Year for the city of Oklahoma City. Thank you so much for what you do. And I just want to read again, just so Mason is very clear here about why we're doing this. Diligence, dedication, determination, to satisfactorily complete every assigned task, willingness to help others, desire to master new skills, and consistently cheerful and confident attitude contributes to the morale of the entire department. Mason, it doesn't get any better than that. Let's show our appreciation one more time for our employee of the year. Thank you so much for what you do. Thank you. Paula, thank you for helping us recognize her. Well, you have some really good employees, I'm gonna tell you.
We do.
Very impressive group. We're on Item Three of the council agenda. These are items from the Office of the Mayor. Look for a motion on Item D and E. These are appointments. All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item Four is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Four A is to receive the journal for December 30th, and Four B is to approve the journal for December 16th. Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. And now it's time for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, a couple this morning on Page 11, Page 11 under Item 8D1. Item B, 2201 North Bryant, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item G, 1805 West Park, we ask that that be stricken. We need to re-notify. Item J, 504 North Sweetgum Avenue, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item K, 8101 Westwood Circle, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. Item M, 3040 Northwest 11th Street, we ask that that be stricken. The owner has secured. And finally, Item Q, 215 Southwest 23rd Street, we ask that that be stricken. Again, the owner has secured.
Any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, we'll recess the council meeting. Convene is the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are three items. Comments or questions on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC MFA convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. Again, there are three items.
Your Honor, I have a question.
Uh huh.
On Item PPA-B, is employed. This is a savings, it's a negotiation of a gas contract where the city buys gas directly from a producer and has somebody take it to them. And we saved over $265,000 a year on this project, on this particular system. But if you look at the back of the sheet, the estimated cost of the consultant to help us do this is $1,100,000 per year. So we are spending a whole lot more than we're saving, and I think that needs to be looked at.
Yeah, well, let's get back to you on that because I'll get back to you on that because I'm pretty sure that's, we are making money off of this. All right, ready to vote on the PPA? Cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC PPA convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust. Two items.
Your Honor, I have another question on this one. Item A is, has a final acceptance of the Solid Waste Management Center project. And I wondered if we looked at the lighting out there, for high-efficiency lighting. It looked like, as I drove by last night, that there was some lights on. They're all mercury vapor in their work area. They're fine lights, but they may not be the most efficient lighting on the market.
We have a lot of areas that we don't have the most efficient lights in. That's what our Energy Office is doing, and looking at some of these projects out there. But we have several challenges in that area. By the way, Craig and Doug are here to answer the question on the natural gas. If we can go back for a second.
Okay.
That's actually, that company helps. We purchase our gas through that company, so it's actually the gas purchases. So the million dollars is the amount that we're purchasing. We're paying to purchase the gas, but we're paying less purchasing the gas through them than we would otherwise.
All right, we're ready to vote on the EAT. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket. All right, any individual considerations?
F, Your Honor.
F?
F, is it Frank?
Okay.
Mayor, if I could speak about 6G and 6S, please.
Certainly. All right, Larry, you want to get started with Item F?
I'd just like to commend these neighborhoods for volunteering to pick up the illegally placed signs that are in and joining their neighborhood and like to encourage other neighborhoods to do the same thing. If each of us would pick up in our area, we could help beautify the whole city. Thank you, Your Honor.
That's been a great program, Larry. Thanks for your leadership on that area. It's really helpful. And Meg, you wanted to mention Item G?
I did, if I could briefly. This is the section of Project 180 involving Park Avenue from Hudson to North Broadway. And it looks like we've extended days a little bit. We maybe talked about this last week with utility relocations. And I just wanted to make sure that folks on Park Avenue, you know, we're in constant communication with the city. This is going to be complicated. Lots of retail along this stretch. And so I know that the city's, I know staff is working hard on keeping the lines of communication open, but I just want to reinforce how important that's going to be as we kind of bring Project 180 to a closure.
Good.
Thank you for that. And Item 6S is a really important development. It is in Ward Seven, I will say. But I wanted to recognize Gary Brooks, who's here in the audience today, the developer of the Steel Yard project. And this is one that's so important because it not only includes market price, but also includes low-income housing. And it's something that we've talked about a lot in the recent past. And I just want to congratulate you for bringing this project together. It's another HUD project. I think Gary's just completed the edge up at 13th and Walker in a magnificent project in Midtown. And we expect exactly the same in the Steel Yard project. So congratulations.
Any other comments or questions on the consent docket? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Which is on to the concurrence docket. Just one item today comes to us from the PPA on the Cox Convention Center freight elevator repairs. Is there a motion there?
Move the item.
All right, cast your votes on 7A. It passed unanimously. And now we're on to Item Eight. These are items that require a separate vote. Item 8A is a request to close an easement. This is in Ward Three. Larry, you okay with this? Okay, how about a motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Let's vote on Item 8A, and it passed unanimously. Item 8B is an ordinance up for final hearing today. And as council has been informed in a previous meeting, this has to do with the auditing of our hotel taxes. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on Item 8B today? All right, how about a motion then?
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, sure.
Do we include bed and breakfast in this hotel motel tax?
I, yes. It's any place that has two or more rooms for rent, where they rent out rooms.
And so we actually collect a tax match, hotel motel tax?
They're supposed to pay the tax. And if you just had a bed and breakfast that just had one room, then they would, it would not apply to them, but two or more, it does.
Well, I know they're supposed to pay the tax. My question was, do we actually go out and collect the tax?
Craig Freeman will have to answer that. I believe we do, yes. When we become aware of it.
I mean, we do have folks that audit in the Treasurer's Office, and that's part of their responsibilities. It's a responsibility. I'm not sure that we get them all, but that's a responsibility.
All right, we're voting on Item 8B. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8C is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8C? All right, how about a motion then on the dilapidated structure list?
Move the item.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8D is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under 8D today? All right, how about a motion here? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8E is a request for a revocable permit. This will be a right-of-way use that would allow us to hold the Martin Luther King Jingle Day Parade on January 19th. It goes through Automobile Alley, Brick Town, and Downtown through Wards Six and Seven. Is there anyone here representing this event today? Well, come on forward. We'd like to hear more about your plans. And as usual, we'll need your name and address for the record.
R.L. Doyle, Box 182 Spencer, Oklahoma, 73084. Yes, Mayor and Council, I chair the MLK Coalition. And as far as I know, we are ready to go. We just need to see if someone can provide us with some warm weather for that day. But other than that, I think we have our registration, our participants already.
I think the weather was pretty good last year.
Yes, it was.
We need that again. We don't need the weather we're having right now. Well, appreciate your work out there to help us remember Dr. King.
Thank you.
This is in Wards Six and Seven. How about a motion and a second from the two of you?
Before I move it, I just want to recognize the Martin Luther King Coalition. I see the President of the NAACP here, Mr. Garland-Pewitt. And I grew up going to the Martin Luther King Parade and being a part of the Martin Luther King Parade. And it's good to still be a part of the Martin Luther King Parade. And thank you all for what you all do. So I move for approval.
Second.
All right, cast your votes. And it passed unanimously. Good luck. Item 8F, I understand we do need executive session on this matter, Kenny?
Yes.
All right, how about a motion to move 8F into executive session? All right, cast your votes. An item 8F moves to executive session. Item 8G, I understand we do not need executive session, so I think a motion to strike would be in order. All right, cast your votes. That item is struck from the agenda. Item 8H, I understand we do need executive session to get updated on negotiations. All right, how about a motion then to move Item 8H to executive session? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item 8I is claims recommended for denial. Is anyone here hoping to speak on the item listed under 8I-1? Claims recommended for denial? All right, how about a motion? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item Nine is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under Item Nine? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item Ten is items from council. James, do you have anything for us today? Ed?
Briefly. I promised Larry I'd be brief. But I wanted to just clarify one thing, reading the editorial in the Oklahman yesterday just about the Northeast development. And as we prepare for discussion next week and a vote next week, what really to me is just, there's only one issue. And I didn't hear that talked about in the editorial yesterday. The one issue is not, does the Northeast deserve better? I don't think anybody disagrees with that. Or that the TIF, that it's blighted the TIF is appropriate for that area. To me, the central issue is, should the city council be able to review eminent domain cases? Just like we do with other trusts, the Water Trust, Airport Trust. It goes before both bodies. Or should it just be three unelected people on the Urban Renewal Board that have the say as to whether property can be seized from one private individual and given to a corporation or another private individual? Should the sole authority be with those three people? Or should it come before the city council also? To me, that's the only remaining issue. And I would hope that we would discuss that next week. And if someone believes that it should just be with the Urban Renewal Board, explain to me why. Why, I would hope that we would discuss those terms with an eye towards what was probably the most controversial Supreme Court case in the last decade, which is Kelo versus the City of New London, because it very closely approximates what we're talking about here. There in the city of New London, you had an African-American neighborhood that deserved better, that had properties with a lot of crime. And the city wanted to use eminent domain to take certain areas and have a headquarters for Pfizer Corporation and a hotel and a nice development. Well, it was fought vigorously by the NAACP, by the Martin Luther King Southern Leadership Federation, by the AARP, by the South Jersey Legal Services, because of the unrestricted eminent domain and how that can disproportionately fall on the poor and minorities. The NAACP fought that vigorously. And one might wonder why, because it very closely approximates. And the difference in that case, which was so fiercely, it decided five to four, is that it's not a city using eminent domain to build a downtown park or a whitewater facility or a convention center. It's taking from a private individual and giving to a corporation. And sometimes corporations and private developers don't have the AAA bond rating that like the city of Oklahoma City has. Because sometimes they have problems with financing, which is exactly what happened in the city of New London. They took this property from individuals and from businesses, and then they couldn't get the financing. It's exactly what appears to be happening here. We've talked about, we've heard about the King's Crossing development. That was in the editorial in the Oklahman yesterday. It doesn't appear to me that that's going to happen because of financing, the same kind of environmental abatement issues or multiple issues. I'm not sure when the Oklahman's going to share that with the public. But you have the exact same mirror situation as that Supreme Court case. So I would just hope that we would, we would be able to discuss that in those terms next week. Thanks.
Larry?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to share some bad news. Some of you may have heard this already, some of you may not. Longtime servant of Oklahoma City, longtime city councilman Jack Cornet, also a county commissioner, passed away yesterday. And I just wanted to mention that because he had done a lot for our city. Thank you, Your Honor.
And he was your predecessor in the Ward Three spot. Served from 1979, is that right? Up until 2000?
2000.
That's right. When he was elected to the county. Yeah, he's the longest-serving city councilman in city history.
I just want to add to Larry's comments about Jack. I've served with Jack about a century ago when I first, he'd been on the council.
Well, literally the last century.
Yeah, oh yeah, it was in the last century, certainly. And he was, like I said, you commented, he's the longest-serving councilman in the history of the city. So, and he was here for a long, long time. And he was a very interesting character as an individual also. And we'll all miss him. I'd like to add on a little bit to something that Councilman Shadid commented about the urban renewal thing. I'm not sure, I think a lot of people understood what I said last week based on the comments that I received. They weren't all negative. But my concern is primarily that the people that lose their homes, and the businesses are another matter, but I think the principle still applies, is the people that lose their homes as a result of an urban renewal taking are oftentimes not rewarded for anything other than the depressed value of their home. My concern is that there ought to be a way, and I've looked into it during this last week, there ought to be a way to give them a redevelopment, an interest of some kind in the redevelopment project. Some kind of an override in, as it, similar to the way a mineral interest would work when somebody else develops the minerals. And I've done some research on it, and that's really what I'm looking at. I'm looking, I'm looking at what I consider to be fairness. The other portion of it had to do with, and the mayor alluded to the fact that he also agree with this, that we don't do something without a plan, that we don't let the same thing happen before. Again, I think learning from the past is important. And I think if we don't have a plan in place when we take property, then we would lay ourselves open for all kinds of criticism because we don't solve the problem in the short run. We exacerbate it in the short run. we exacerbate it in the short run. And that's my concern. I voted for the, to go forward. I mean, there were a couple of motions and I voted for it. So I'm not opposed to the idea. It's been, on balance, I guess if you look at it over 100-year or 50-year or 75-year and look at the success we have now, who could say it's not successful in terms of bringing really nice things to Oklahoma City? But it shouldn't have taken 50 years. We should not have left property to lay fallow and next to an occupied dwelling for 30, 40 years. And I just want to be sure we don't do that again. I don't want that to be misunderstood. John, I especially don't want it to be misunderstood by you, because I do not oppose the idea. The TIF, the urban renewal, the eminent domain, taking of it, I'm not into that part of it. But I'm into the people that lose their property to be treated fairly, both from a standpoint of the price they get for it at the time and the future value that's increased because they own the property, they had an interest in it, and that it be done with a plan. We don't, again, I don't want to be critical of what's happened in the past to excess, but the fact is, we can still look at things that happened in the last time we did this and see that it wasn't done as well as we'd like for it to be done. And that's what I'm after. I'm not after trying to, the last thing I want to do is to disrupt something as good an idea as the 23rd Street part of that is. It's a great idea. Long overdue. All you have to do is drive down that street and realize how long overdue it is. But I also want people to be treated fairly.
David?
Well, it sounds like we're beginning our discussion a week early on this, but I'm supportive of the council taking an appeals-type position on these types of matters, that it would go through the urban renewal, they would make a decision, and if the owner of the property did not like that decision, they have the right to appeal to the city council, and then we would hear it and we could override that decision. That would be my preference. And the main reason is, sometimes these property owners do not have the resources to take this position to court and fight it in court. So we need to provide a second opportunity for them to be able to present their case. And I think the city council is the proper forum for that. I wouldn't want to make it a requirement. Some would prefer going directly to court after the decision by urban renewal. So I think we should allow them to have direct access to the courts if that's what they so choose. But those who may not have the resources should at least have an opportunity to present their case before city council without incurring any cost. Then they would still have the opportunity to go to court. So that's my only preference on this. Thank you.
Meg?
I was going to wait until next week, but I guess I have one comment as well, which is many people settle with urban renewal very amicably and don't need recourse to come to anybody else. So, you know, I think there's a lot of discussion in this, a lot of further discussion in this matter. I really wanted to congratulate the Arts Council of Oklahoma City for a very successful opening night. It was a great evening, lots of folks downtown despite how cold it was. It was really interesting to move the venue to Bicentennial Park. It was really nice to see in front of the Civic Center and so the Arts Council and all of their zillions of volunteers that helped put that evening on. I want to congratulate everybody.
Okay, John?
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do share some of the comments by Councilman McAttee and Councilman White. As it relates to the late Jack Cornet, I can remember Jack Cornet as a kid. Well, my dad served as mayor of El Reno, Oklahoma. Jack Cornet will definitely be missed. Thank you.
Pat?
Your Honor, just a question of the city manager. We have a number of intersections in the city that have walk signs that don't go anywhere. Are those, were those installed by the city or the federal government?
I suppose it could have been by either. Most of them are probably installed by the city that own our projects. It's probably on most of them, although it's a federal requirement.
Okay, we have some intersections where they're absolutely wasted. If we're spending money on those, we ought to take them out and put them, or better use someplace where we actually have some pedestrian crossing.
That'd be great, but we don't have that at latitude, Mr. Ryan. When we take the projects and design them, we have to do them to the federal standards and ADA requirements require that we do that.
Whether there's an intersection there, I mean, whether there's sidewalks there or not.
I'm pretty sure on that, we can do a follow-up report on that. We actually had a link on our website at one time that talked about why these ramps were being installed. It seemed to go nowhere, but.
Right, the ramps were installed by a federal program and they don't go anywhere except into fences, bikes, or poles. But I'm concerned about the walk signs where it says you can walk or don't walk, because there's no sidewalks to go anyplace. So we're putting these things up where they will probably not be needed. And it seems like if the city's doing it, we ought to stop and take down the ones we have that are useless and put them to use someplace where we actually have some sidewalks.
Aren't people still crossing intersections even if there's no?
They pay no attention to the walk sign or not. And those who do assume they have some kind of a right to walk, and they don't, because there's turning traffic always. And the pedestrian has the right of way, but the turning traffic doesn't always pay attention to that.
I'd be happy to do a follow-up report on you.
Thanks.
For you on that.
All right, city manager reports.
This morning, we have an opportunity to find out a little bit about the improvements at Spiegel and Taft Stadium. Gary Armbruster is here this morning. He's a principal with MA+ Architects, and he's been the architect on the projects.
Good morning. Thank you for having me today.
Morning.
I'm going to quickly go through my presentation, giving you an update on Taft and Spiegel Talk about the schedule of both projects and the renovations that we've had. This was a school bond-issue project. Please feel free to raise your hand and yell at me, let me know if you have any questions during the presentation. The design began back in June 2011, with construction beginning in July 2013 on Spiegel Stadium, and construction will be complete this month. We are actually punch-listing the building this Friday, or the whole facility. During the design process, we went through a number of processes, looking at historic photos, old magazines, old yearbooks, to try to find out what was there and try to incorporate some of this into the design. Some of the, this is some before photos of some of the issues that we got into, from fences, WPA wall that was falling apart, just a number of issues that we had to deal with in the design and updating of the stadium. But I think you'll see that we've updated it nicely. This is a before photo of the press box and the south bleachers. And this is a during construction photo from that essentially same angle. We added a new press box, new seating, new locker rooms, new concessions and restrooms. Again, another photo looking at the south stands of the original and the new press box. Fully updated facility, ADA, new elevator, so it's going to be a state-of-the-art facility that Oklahoma City Public Schools and the city can use. View from the field level and the new view showing the new turf, which will be very nice for the city of Oklahoma City to play on and Oklahoma City Public Schools. View of the Taft wall as it originally sat with grass fields, and then today with the new turf, new eight-lane running track. That was another upgrade that we had at the facility. Again, new concessions and restrooms in the background. Again, new view of the stands and restrooms fitting in nicely to the existing architecture. And then the visitor stands as it sat before and as it sits today. We had to remove those during construction. We found a number of structural issues that were hidden, and those are being bid right now for new bleachers for the north side. Locker room before, again, the lighting's so bad you couldn't take a good before photo in the locker room after a really big difference in the facilities that the students will use. So a huge upgrade there for the student athletes.
Excuse me, but do you have any renderings of the stands that'll be built on the north side?
We can get you some. We don't have any.
I didn't know where they were going to be rebuilt or not when I saw them come down, and then I didn't see anything go back up. I was kind of concerned with that.
They're going to be put back. They are, the design drawings are complete, and they are going to be put out to bid now.
Not an emergency, but I'd like to see them when.
Absolutely. We can get you those. And then an overall view looking at those stands that were taken down and an overall view of the field. It's going to be a nice complement to the renovations that we did over at Capitol Hill High School. Switching to Taft Stadium, design began in the same month, June 2011. Construction began in July 2013, and construction will be complete on this project in March 2015, a couple of months after Spiegel Stadium. Larger project overall, as you know, there's a lot of history in Taft Stadium. The biggest question I always got is, are you going to tear the wall down? And absolutely not, we're not tearing the wall down, which relieved a lot of people and kept me my job. So it was a great project to work on. There were a number of issues inside. We pretty much kept the Taft wall and then tore everything down inside because there were so many issues with the existing concrete bleachers. But you could tell by the historic photos, not only did they play football here, but they had stock car races and a number of events here over the years. We won't be having stock car races, but we will be playing a lot of events, like we'll see here in a second. Some of the before photos where we had WPA wall damage and just holes in the concrete bleachers where you can tell that there was no other issue, no other thing we could do but tear it down. This is the before view of the Taft wall. Again, some of the photos that you're going to see on this one is before photos, some construction photos, and then some renderings, because we're not quite through with construction yet. So the before photo of the Taft wall with the parking lot, this is it during construction. Not a whole lot of difference that you can see in this. But then the photo of the rendering after, this is what it will look like with new parking lot, a fully changed and updated Taft wall, and then the stands in the background that you can see. The before photo of the old press box and the west stands, and a new view of the west stands. We've also added concessions and restrooms on either side, as well as locker rooms and a new press box that you can see being constructed with a new ADA elevator. And then the after rendering, these are some of the renderings that have been taken from some of the energy upgrades that are also going on in the stadium. View of looking at the Taft wall and the east stands and as it sits today with new concessions and restrooms on either side of the new stands. It was fun to take down the old stands that supported the Taft wall and while maintaining the integrity of the Taft wall, that was a nice engineering feat by our engineering firm. And then the view of a future soccer game being played. View of the east stands, again, a view of the east stands and new lockers and concessions and the new turf field. And then kind of an overall view of the complex as it will be complete. You can see it says OKC in the stands, those will be in there. New turf field, state-of-the-art turf field. I don't know about you, but that video always pumps me up and gets me excited about the changes. That is the presentation. Do you have any questions?
Couple of things I'd like to point out. One is that I think Gary and his team did a great job of trying to preserve the past and yet really doing a pretty much total renovation of stadiums that were really, really substandard. But I think it's also interesting to point out on the Taft Stadium, there was substantial money put in by Prodigal, the owners of the Oklahoma City Energy. And I think that's a great example of a public-private partnership, where they came in and were able to upgrade the facility beyond what the budget was at the school district to make it happen. So it's kind of nice that they were able to marry those together and really come up with a stadium out there that I think will be very, very usable for the school district from any decades ago.
When you think about it, you've got boys and girls track, you've got boys and girls soccer, and then you've got football, which is obviously a boys' sport. But that's five different athletic teams. So we call them football stadiums, but there's a number of athletes, and that's not even counting the marching band, that will be able to perform on the surface. So a lot of kids will be able to take advantage of these improvements.
It's going to be a great playoff, a state playoff venue, too.
What's the seating capacity of both the new stadiums?
About 7,000 for Taft.
What about Spiegel?
A little less at Spiegel with the new addition, but they're pretty comparable, just not much less.
What was Taft before?
Well, it's hard to say, because if you remember, in that south end zone, you had a lot of amphitheater seating on that hill that really wasn't usable. I've heard as much as 18,000 if you used that, but it really wasn't usable when we got onboard. If at some point in the future you wanted to add some seating to that south end, that could definitely be done to mimic that. Right now, we've got grass seating. It'd be a good location for parents with children who like to roll down hills and throw out a blanket. That'd be a good location. We haven't really put a number on the number of people that could sit there, but you could definitely sit there for an event.
I'd think the long-term interest would be to have it seat more people. I mean, I'm sure the Energy'd like to draw more than 7,000 at some point in time.
Oh, I know that they would.
Really great touch to add the OKC in the seating.
Thank you. I thought it was nice.
Really clever in a very simple way with no cost to say.
Yes.
Really great.
I wanted to also compliment you on the preservation of the historic nature of it to this point. I mean, in both facilities, the WPA walls were part of the project, and they were saved as well as you could at Spiegel and that wall at Taft. I personally like that. I really appreciate that. And I think the long run, it gives it kind of an instant presence as opposed to something that we just erect there now. I mean, it has an instant kind of, like Central High School, the renovation of Central, it has an instant connection to Oklahoma City without being from the ground up kind of a project. I really like it.
Thank you. And we have an Olympic gold medalist that ran at Spiegel with JW Mashburn. We knew that we had to preserve as many of the historic elements as possible in both stadiums.
Right. And Taft, actually, there was an OU, at least one, if not several OU football games were played at Taft Stadium at one point in time. And actually, I think a bowl game was played at Taft Stadium.
I used to have radios at Spiegel. Stock car races and rodeo, both were there.
The field, I've been on the field, the new field at Capitol Hill, and it is quite impressive. And I'm sure once the student athletes get a chance to go out on it, they will be very impressed. You know, back in '72, the last year I was there, this field was pretty rough, and it's only continued to deteriorate. And those before photos that you showed, I think demonstrated the school district's lack of interest in athletics. And I hope through this endeavor, that has changed. The Capitol Alumni Association has raised enough funds and plans to continue to raise funds, to continue the maintenance of those fields. And they're very supportive. It's got a lot of great history in athletics. But when you allow your facilities to decline to such a level as the school district had prior to these renovations, it can't help but have a negative impact on the student athletes' attitudes and interest. So I hope that change. I hope the Oklahoma City Public School system will make the financial commitment to their athletic program in all various programs. And I also want to thank Fields and Futures for assisting with the new fields at Capitol Hill in the baseball and practice facilities. Very nice. And again, I want to thank the Capitol. and, and practice facilities, very nice, and again, I want to thank the Capitol Alumni Association for taking on the responsibility of providing maintenance for these fields. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we have some citizens who have signed up to be heard this morning, I'll ask each of you to keep your comments to three minutes or less. And Bill, I will need your name and address stated for the record.
Okay, Bill Elliott, 4418 Northwest 60th Street, proud Board One member. I'm with the Oklahoma Bicycle Society and glad to be here today. I want to tell, tell you about a program, the League of American Bicyclists, which is this national bike club puts on, it's called the Bicycle Friendly Community Program. And they have different levels, there's a bronze level, silver level, gold, an example, Dallas is a bronze, Denver is a silver, Portland, Oregon is a gold. And there's advantages to a city to become a bicycle-friendly community, things like prestige to the city, citizen health for having a good bicycle infrastructure for their citizens to participate in, and businesses like this because it helps in recruiting young professionals. So, in Jan, in August last summer, Oklahoma Bicycle Society along with the Oklahoma City Planning Department got together, collaborated, and submitted the very first bicycle-friendly community, bicycle-friendly community application, and proudly announced that on November 18th, Oklahoma, Oklahoma City was awarded honorable mention for being a bicycle-friendly community. So, I applaud you for our first step in this direction. In late January, Oklahoma City will receive notes from the LAB on suggestions on how we can move from an honorable mention up to a bronze level. So, I look forward to working with the council and the mayor's office to consider whether this is a project that we'd like to take on, to work towards becoming a bronze-level The second thing I'd like to bring up today is understanding there'll be some future traffic ordinances concerning bicycles coming before the council, and there's a couple of them. One has to do with bicycles that come up behind a group of cars, two lanes of cars, and try to ride up the middle, which is certainly not a nice thing to do. And while the bicycle community doesn't necessarily have any objections to that, I just want to make sure that we're all on board for that. The second thing has to do with maintaining a three-foot rule, a three-foot gap between a bicycle and a car. Now, currently, you have a rule that says a car should not get within three feet of bicycle, and this new rule, I believe, has to do with a bicycle shouldn't also get three feet from a car. However, the wording of the proposed ordinance is very vague, and if you read it the right way, and specifically if a policeman reads it the right way, it may be that a car comes up and hits a bicycle and the bicyclist is, is in the wrong because they were within three feet of the car, even though it wasn't bicyclist's fault. So, as this ordinance comes up, I do hope that you take this into consideration, make sure that the wording is exactly the way it should be, there are other states that have better wording for the same process. And the last thing is, as we progress towards bicycle-friendly community, rules that are not good for bicyclists help, don't help us reach this goal, so keep that in mind, too. So, thank you so much.
Bill, thanks for your comments. Grace Franklin? Morning, Grace.
Good morning, my name's Grace Franklin, 4415 North Kelly, yeah, in Oklahoma City, that, that's obvious. I am here with OKC Artists for Justice. We are shedding a light on the Daniel Holtzclaw case. Daniel Holtzclaw is the officer that's been accused with 36 counts of sexual assault against women on the northeast side of Oklahoma City. The women that were targeted were black, they were also in low socioeconomic situations. On the northeast side of Oklahoma City, as it has been repeated several times, it is a low-income area. In that area, there are also middle-class and highly educated black women that were not targeted, so these women were purposely sought out and, and targeted. Our concern with this case, number one, we're talking about 36 counts, and I just, I just want to go over that real quick and I will be brief, but we're talking about counts that include 11 counts of sexual battery, two counts of second-degree rape, seven counts of forcible oral sodomy, five indecent exposures, and also six counts of first-degree rape. In Oklahoma, first-degree rape holds a life sentence if convicted, and there are six counts. We are talking about violent sexual assault. The officer is out on bail. For the women in this city, for the women on the northeast side of Oklahoma City, that is unacceptable. He violated the house arrest and received 14 days in county and was released back on house arrest, that is unacceptable. The fact that he is at home and also receiving a check because he is on administrative leave with pay is unacceptable for us. We are asking the council to please review the policies for the police department. We understand that when police officers are charged with crimes that there is a process, and we are all about the process, but when you say to citizens that you can have 36 counts of sexual assault and still be at home, then somebody is being devalued, and the women are not being valued in this case. There has to be a way for an officer to have his job protected while he is being, while he's going through the trial, but at the same time not force us to have to pay for him being at home. You cannot have authority and responsibility, abuse the authority and responsibility, and then hide behind the protection of the authority and responsibility, that's not acceptable. We are asking that the city council look at the policies and procedures for the police department in situations where there is a felony, where there are violent felonies. On the northeast side of Oklahoma City, we don't have, we have a, an interesting relationship with the police department, this case has not helped that. The lack of exposure, the lack of consideration for these women has not helped that, and, and we don't condemn the police department, we know that there are hard-working police officers who do their job every day and do it well, but for those who do not, for those who are violent, for those who violate the rights of citizens, there has to be a way to protect the citizens from those officers who are not doing their jobs.
Grace, thank you.
Thank you.
Coming down.
Morning. Ajani, I get that a lot.
Okay.
2229 Warrior Circle, Oklahoma City, 73121. I appreciate everyone for allowing us to speak. The issue we're gonna address today, and I'm sorry, I'm speaking for the group, the Greenwood District, and we're gonna be addressing police body cameras. Okay. So, I think we can all agree that this is an issue that, given the recent times, deserves a lot of attention, but I also want to address that we don't see this necessarily from just a one-sided issue, meaning that we understand that the citizens also need protection from those in power who choose to abuse it, but on the reverse side of that, we understand that there are those in position of power who want to, we want to make sure that aren't unjustly accused of actions that they didn't do. For example, there was a officer in Albuquerque, this young gentleman, he had had pulled a woman over and arrested her for suspicion of an EWI. Now, during this time, the woman did not know that she was actually being under surveillance, so you could kind of see monitors of her not only trying to flirt with the officer, but talk her way out of the situation, even going as far as to admitting that she was going to school to become a cop. During the surveillance, you could also view the officer, after he detained her, the young woman had hit a cellphone in her bra. The woman had asked to go to a restroom, in the restroom, the officer overheard her having a conversation. During the conversation, he realized that he forgot to actually search her for the cellphone. He pulled the young woman out of the restroom, and what we're assuming happened during the conversation is the woman was told to say the officer sexually assaulted her, and so that was her plan of action. She started to accuse the officer of sexual assault. Now, given the situation, the officer was able to tell the young woman that she was already under surveillance and all this information could actually be viewed. Now, this could have been taken to a completely different escalated level, but because of the situation of surveillance, it was quickly de-escalated. So, again, we want to, we're not trying to have this enforced to punish officers for doing their job, we're trying to have it enforced so that the officers that are trying to do their job can. So, in the end, when we look at the situation, we understand that people can bend the truth, and given certain circumstances, they might also leave out crucial evidence that can make a case go a completely different direction. So, all we want to do is just acknowledge the importance that we know that video cameras will do nothing but tell the truth.
Yeah, I appreciate the comments, thanks for coming down.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen of the council board, mayor, my name is Joseph Gunn III, I live at 3505 Canton Trail. I'm here representing a nonprofit organization called Informant, I just want to discuss the body cams as well. I haven't heard much conversation about it in the recent months, but I want the council to know that there are voting members here and abroad that still would like to see this happen in Oklahoma. A few months back, I saw an episode on Nat Geo where they did a human experiment, where they set up a booth that said free money. Now, there was three different test areas that they did it, but the last two were the most important, they left it blank, the host was removed and they said free money, so people just came up and grabbed it just because they felt that no one was watching them. The second thing that they, or the final thing that they did was they actually put up a poster in the back with a big set of eyes. Now, that brought fear and apprehension because people were wondering like, well, maybe there's a camera, maybe people are watching me, and so they were less likely to go and grab the money from the till. And when they did decide that they were gonna grab the money from the till, it was sparingly, they didn't grab as much as they could when there wasn't anyone there. I say that to say that there was a study done by the University of Cambridge Institute of Criminology back in 2012 with the Rialto Police Department. With that, over a year of study, they found that there was 90% reduction in citizen complaints and 60%, 60% drop in use of force by police. Now, whether reductions were because of the police were behaving correctly or that the citizens were behaving correctly, that's up for debate. There was another study done by the International Association Chief of Police, where they found that 90% of all officer transactions are outside of the view of the car, so that means traffic, that means that the, excuse me, that the dash cams aren't enough. So, if there's an escalated situation in the car and the police has to open fire into the car, the question is, well, why did the officer have to, have to shoot into the car? What did the citizen do to provoke or to make the officer feel threatened? Those answers can be answered with police body cams, because the body cams are the perfect eyewitness. They don't forget anything where eyewitnesses do and where police reports might forget something, because we're all human, we're all fallible. So, I just want to thank you for your time, I do want to leave you with a couple of questions. If there were body cams in Ferguson, do you think the situation would have happened the way that it did? The young lady mentioned the officer in question with the 36 counts, if he had a, if he had a body cam, would that have happened as well? Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Andrew have to leave us? All right, and Jeff Trevillian? Morning, Jeff. Thanks for coming down.
Good morning, my name's Jeff Trevillian, I live at 511 North Fontio Avenue in Oklahoma City, and I'm here, you know, to speak on, to speak to this council. First of all, I want to thank you for your service to this community. Your leadership has definitely been instrumental in moving Oklahoma City onto the, the national stage, and I just want to, you know, definitely thank you guys for that, and I recently also read that Oklahoma City was among the top cities for relocation. So, I think many people around the country are beginning to recognize what we already know, is that Oklahoma City is a great place to live. And with that said, I think that the council, to reiterate what some of the other speakers have, have said, that this council should give serious consideration to implementing body cameras. I believe that the body cameras are very important for two main reasons. First, I believe that that would be a signal to the rest of the country as well that Oklahoma City is a forward-thinking city. By many of the decisions that we have, that you guys have already made with the backing of the citizens, like maps and things like that, we, we have shown that, that we prioritize education, we prioritize reinvesting in our, in our city. And so, for the second reason, again, is the protection of police and citizens from false accusations. Again, some of the things that happened in, in other parts of the country, dealing with the minority communities and between the police, I think we have been fortunate here because of the, the excellent training of the police, that, that hasn't been quite as much of an issue here. For example, there's been a, a good emphasis on community policing in my neighborhood association, after we began to have invite police officers, including the OU police as well as Oklahoma City police, to our neighborhood association meetings, we, we saw a dramatic decrease in the number of complaints that we received from our neighborhood, our, our neighbors regarding perceived, you know, unfair ticketing, harassment, things like that. And so, I believe that the body cameras, again, would be another step in that direction to reassure the citizens that the government is behind, is, is looking for the truth of the matter, of any, any issue that comes up, that the truth of the matter will be exposed through body cameras, and I believe that with the upcoming union negotiations, that should be a topic that is up for discussion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for coming down.
Mayor, can I just say a couple of things? Thank you for coming down today. Body cameras is something that, first of all, Mayor Cornet has brought up a while back and asked us to pursue. Chief City has been looking at body cameras now for a number of, of weeks or months. I anticipate this month, we will, this month, being January, we will have a report to city council talking about body cameras, the pros and cons, the costs, and maybe a pilot project to get it up and, started and up and running. There's a lot of issues with body cameras, I'm not saying that, that it's undoable at all, but there are a lot of issues that need to be worked through, the policies, the data management, the Open Records Act, and, and some of those things. So, we're, we are trying to address all of those, and again, should have some recommendations to council this month, so thank you.
Yeah, I think we ought to figure out what to do, if we can. All right, we have executive session, we'll be back. All right, we have executive session, we'll be back.